Good evening. That's a frog that just came at you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to your September Town Council meeting. Good to see you all here this evening. Glad to see all of our staff and friends and visitors tonight. Those of you who are watching at home on Facebook or you're watching live on TV6, welcome to our meeting. We're always glad when you take time out of your day to be with us and learn more about your town government. We will do our customary introduction of council members.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Councilmember Jane Welch.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jean Marie Foster.
I'm Mike Horn.
Ken Sadler.
Happy Thursday. I'm Melissa Hunt.
And I'm Fred Franklin.
If you'll join us, please, we'll have an invocation led by Councilmember Sadler, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Welch. Please stand if you're able.
Let us bow and give thanks during this season that is approaching of the fall, the changing of the leaves, and the reminder that there are seasons in our lives as well. Let us reflect on things that are past and the things that are to come, and on the work that is before us as a council that we do on behalf of the citizens who entrust that work to us. We pray together that you will be constant in our lives and watch over us in the days, weeks, years to come. These things we pray in thy name, and let us all say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd also like to recognize tonight momentarily, we have two of our candidates who are going to be running for Town Council. One is Mr. Monty Long, and I think they're probably in the back of your head right now, but that's okay. The other is Mr. Ivan Huffman, and he is running for council as well. Nope? Oh, he was here. Nope, sorry about that. Also, we want to recognize Damari Robertson. Damari, stand up. Damari was one of the participants in our most recent Lewisville Student Leadership Day, and it was a full day where we had, I believe, 16 students from area schools to come by and learn a little bit about our town government and how it operates. Damari, did you have a good time?
Yeah.
Yeah, how many M&amp;M's did you eat?
A lot.
Well, very good, Damari. It's good that you're here with us today. Councilmembers, you have our agenda in front of you. Madam Clerk, did we have any changes?
No, sir.
Very good. With no revisions or additions, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Ms. Foster makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Mr. Manager, the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is item number two on the agenda, the consent agenda. Item 2A is Resolution 2023-037. These are the financial statements for one month dated July 31, 2023. 2B, that item is approval of the agenda briefing minutes from August 3, 2023. And last but not least, item 2C, the approval of the regular meeting minutes from August 10, 2023. And that is the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that we generally take in course of action, which are usually our minutes, our financial reports. We take them all as a group unless any member of the council wishes to pull one of them off and have an individual discussion on it. If not, council members will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Ms. Welch makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Alrighty. We have a recognition tonight, and I'm going to turn on my speaker if I can remember to do it, and it's in my pocket. Is that on, Veronica? Oh, I do. That's amazing that it works. We have a couple of presentations, but tonight we want to recognize an outstanding young man. We have an award in Lewisville, and we've had it for a number of years, and it's called "I'm One of the Reasons Lewisville is a Great Place to Live." Don't try to figure out the acronym for that because it just doesn't work. But tonight, we'd like you to meet Nate Berry. Nate is a Jiu-Jitsu and Mai Tai. Is that right, Mr. Sadler?
Muay Thai.
Muay Thai, thank you. Fighter from Shallowford Lakes. Nate has been doing Mai Tai. Yeah?
Muay.
I thought it was like a Mai Tai was like a Chinese dish until you instructed me that it really was a discipline. For about four years, and Jiu-Jitsu for about two years. He spent his summer fundraising for Tap Out Cancer, part of a Jiu-Jitsu tournament that raises money for cancer research. Nate lost two grandparents and a cousin to cancer, and this summer, in honor of them, he has raised more than $16,000. He's raised money at the Lewisville Town Square Events, the Coffee Mill, Old Mix Pubs, Full Moon Oyster Bar, Five Below, The Home Depot, Food Line. He gets around. And the annual gathering of the Forgotten Sons of the Veterans Motorcycle Club. Recently, Nate was recognized at the Jiu-Jitsu Tournament as the top youth fundraiser, and also, I believe, tied for overall as fundraiser among all groups. So it was quite an outstanding accomplishment. Nate is the son of Jean and Samantha Berry, who are also here with us tonight. Nate, you want to come up and join me on the stage real quick? This is always one of my favorite parts of Town Council meetings. Nate, "I'm One of the Reasons Lewisville is a Great Place to Live" is presented to you this evening for outstanding contributions to the town of Lewisville and residents, presented by the Lewisville Town Council today, September 14, 2023. Mom and Dad, you want to come up and get in the picture with us?
Bring the little one, too. Come on, yeah, family.
Yep.
Oh, we got another one down. The ankle biter, alright.
That's wonderful.
Come on up here in here with us. Very good. Everybody, look at the camera and smile.
One, two, three.
Thanks, Mom and Dad.
Thank you so much.
You can tell the kids that have great parents because of what their accomplishments are, so congratulations.
Awesome.
Alrighty. Sergeant Stringer, I believe you're next.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
If you'll put up the spreadsheet first, so you can see our calls for the month of August, 769 compared to 612 this time last year, 464 security checks, 72 traffic arrests, seven alarms, so that's down quite a bit, and still running that four-minute response time, and there you can see our numbers compared to where we're at last year. Last year, we had 26 alarms at this time, so not a lot has changed. So, Dora, if you'll put up another spreadsheet I've prepared. I know there was some information that council had requested, some of the members of council had requested. How are we doing with crime? So, understand that a lot of these crimes that I put on the spreadsheet, some of those are self-initiated activities, where we're getting out checking businesses, or if somebody's going on vacation, we'll get out and check around the residence, you know, alarms, found property that really doesn't have an actual crime, but it's the way the FBI requires our reporting through the NIBR system. So, what we're really looking at, and so if you'll look at that Crimes Against Person, and then you have another category of Crimes Against Property, and then you've got Crimes Against Society. The Crimes Against Persons, that's what you really want to be concerned with because those are actually like your aggravated assaults, your simple assaults, your communicating threats. So, just to give you a real quick summary of how we're looking, if you look at August of 2022 compared to 2023, they stayed pretty much the same. Simple assaults at 2022 were eight, and then we dropped down to five. And then you have Communicating Threats. We had none, and then we had four. So, a change of about one. And then you've got your burglaries. These are your crimes against property, your motor vehicle thefts, your forgery, frauds, vandalisms. So you can see we had 17 in 2022 compared to 13 in August of 2023. And then you have your Crimes Against Society. So the reason that they classify like drugs or anything like that, you have to have a victim when you have a crime. So, for FBI reporting statistics for the NIBRs, they make us put in there that, you know, the victim is society. So that's why that's classified as Crimes Against Society. So you have your drug offenses. We had two, and now we're up to 10, so that's a change of eight. And then you have your weapons violations. We've had one since August of 2023. And then you have your next group is your trespassing, your family offenses, and then all other. If it doesn't fit into that crime, or into that category, one of those categories, but it's actually a crime, or what the FBI considers to be a crime, and it doesn't fit in one of those, that's rolled into almost like a catch-all. So, to summarize that, August of 2022, we had 79, and we're currently at 63. So it's down. I want everybody to understand that, you know, although we do live in a relatively safe community, we are still, we still have the same type of crimes that any other community has. So we're fortunate, and with the events that we have and everything going on, so we're good neighbors to each other. Just wanted to touch base with you and let you know that if we were to put a graph together, you would see that on like a decline. And all that's going to change, you know. So you'll see it's a constant up and down, but right now, we're on that downhill slope, and that's what we like to see. Nobody has any questions? I'll let you move on.
I do, please. Sergeant Stringer, thank you. It's very thorough to have this as well detailed out. I had two quick questions. One, when you look at the drugs, are you seeing any particular drugs that are more common than others? I mean, that was a bit of a rise.
Unfortunately, when people figure out that they can get high on it, they're going to use it. And that, I mean, that's just the society that we live in.
So it runs the gamut?
It does. We see, most of the drugs that we see is what everybody else is seeing. We're seeing a lot of heroin. We're seeing a lot of fentanyl. We're seeing a lot of cocaine that's cut with fentanyl, so it's just out there. I caution everybody, you know, people put these video clips on social medias. Luckily, we've not had any incidents here, but people will put, you know, money under a windshield wiper, hoping that you'll grab it, and you'd never know if it has any kind of substance on it. So, you know, that's just the times that we're living in, so you've got to be careful with it.
Thank you. The other question was, in that category that really doesn't fit with the others, since there were 49 of those, can you give us a couple of examples of what those would be?
That would be, I would have to actually sit down and look, but, you know, possession of stolen property, or anything like that, and mainly, it's how it's reported. So the big categories is the crimes against people, so it's how it's reported back to the FBI through that NIBR system, and that's why they have to generate that subcategory. Because like I said, they want somebody, if it's a crime, it has to have that victim attached to it. So I'd be happy to try to get some of that information to you if you'd like for me to, and I'd give you some rough examples.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for PJ?
Mainly, just as I was saying earlier, our condolences for your loss and the family of the Forsyth County Sheriff's Deputy Department.
Yes, ma'am. We appreciate that. So Rudy, he was a good officer, and so he worked with Deputy Suthard, who served in Lewisville, so they were pretty good friends, so it's a rough time for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, PJ. Madam Clerk, do you have anything for me to read for Constitution Week? A B S?
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, from time to time, we are asked as a council to do a proclamation recognizing a particular organization event. This evening, we're going to read and approve a proclamation for Constitution Week, that is September 17 through 23, and I'll be brief. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law and not by individuals, and whereas September 17, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention of 1787, and whereas in celebrating the anniversary of this significant document, we honor and preserve the foundations of liberty, justice for every American citizen. Now therefore, the mayor and Town Council of Lewisville do hereby proclaim September 17 through 23, 2023, as Constitution Week. And Lewisville and all citizens are urged to reaffirm the ideals established by the farmers, framers of the Constitution, and as we work with each other to secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and posterity. This is proclaimed today, September 14, 2023. May we have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Foster makes the motion. Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. And we will deliver this to the appropriate people tomorrow, because we're coming up next week as Constitution Week. Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, there will be two opportunities tonight that you can address the council. This is the first one in our public forum. If you have anything that you wish to share, you're thinking about, things you think you would like the council to know about, please come forward, state your name and your address, and share your thoughts, and you can do that now. I see no movement, so we will go ahead and close this first public forum. We will do this again at the end of the meeting, and of course, if you have comments, you can email them to townclerk@lewisvillenc.net, townclerk@lewisvillenc.net. Madam Clerk, you have the next item.
Yes, sir. Before the council is the certificate of sufficiency for the annexation request by Lake at La Sara, Phase 2, Section 7. Nothing unusual was found. Everything looked good with the petition, so this is just a report, and it requires no action from the council.
Very good. Any questions? Thank you. Stacy, I believe you have the next three items.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first resolution before us tonight is Resolution 2023-038. This is a resolution setting a public hearing for an annexation request. The annexation request, the property is located off of La Sara Lodge Drive in the Lake at La Sara Development, and also backs up to some frontage along Clemmons Road, which is, it's not a satellite annexation, it is right next to already, thank you, contiguous. I couldn't think of that word. Couldn't come to me. Contiguous annexation for a property that's already within the town limits of Lewisville. So tonight, this first resolution is just to set the public hearing for October the 12th at 7:00 PM for that annexation request.
Any questions for Stacy?
Motion to approve the Resolution 2023-038.
Second.
Very good. Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We will have that public hearing on October 12.
Okay. The next resolution, along with that first one with the annexation that you just approved, is Resolution 2023-039. This resolution is also setting another public hearing, but it would be for the rezoning of that property contingent on that annexation. By law, whenever we are annexing property, we have to assign zoning to that property, so it would no longer fall under Forsyth County zoning, it would fall under the town of Lewisville zoning. So we would be assigning a zoning district to that location contingent on the annexation. So again, tonight, the public hearing would be held October the 12th at 7:00 PM here in council chambers for that rezoning.
Any questions for Stacy?
Yes, please. So if it was, what would the zoning be?
RS40. We would just accept the same zoning. It's very similar to what is already zoned and what is already in that area for the properties in the town of Lewisville.
So that's residential, what is the 40?
It is residential, single-family. The minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet. That's the predominant zoning district in our rural areas in the western portion of town.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve Resolution 2023-039. Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Ms. Foster makes the second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. One more, Stace.
One more. So lastly, is Resolution 2023-040. The request for this one is to set another public hearing, but this public hearing is for a request for a planned residential development. This requires, it is a special use permit, but it is required approval by the elected body for this same property for the annexation and the rezoning. The request is for five additional lots to be added to the Lake at La Sara Development, and so this would seal that package for what the petitioner is requesting to do. This public hearing, again, would also be October 12, 2023, at 7:00 PM here in council chambers.
Very good. Any questions for Stacy? Entertain a motion, please.
So move.
People speaking at once, but I'm going to say Ms. Hunt made the motion. Ms. Welch made the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous.
Thank you, council.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Before the council is a draft benevolence policy. The town currently does not have a policy that outlines when acknowledgements would be sent in the event of sickness or death of an elected official, community police officer, or staff member. The policy does reflect what current practice is, and we're just trying to get it in writing for guidance for the future.
And that current policy is? What is the current policy?
Resolution 2023-041.
But what is the current policy? Do you have that?
We don't have one, Mike. That's what she's saying.
We don't have a current one.
We're establishing one tonight.
Well, what is it? That policy is, Mr. Franklin?
I have a policy this time.
I can tell you what we're proposing.
Yeah, we have a proposal of what that policy should be.
Yes.
So we are proposing that an acknowledgement be sent in the death of a current or former employee, current employee's immediate family member, current or former elected official, current elected official's immediate family member, current community police officer, and current community police officer's spouse or child.
Very good.
And then it also regulates for hospitalization as well as the birth of a child.
Very good. Any questions for Dora?
I have a question. On the hospitalization, is it also current and spousal, or is it, include family members on the hospitalization, or just on the death piece?
Just the death is for the immediate family. Hospitalization is just for a current employee or current elected official.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve Resolution 2023-041.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Ms. Welch makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Mr. Manager, you have some questions for us on a facility fee exemption.
Yes, sir. First one is item number 6F. That is Resolution 2023-042, a facility fee exemption for the Lewisville Clemmons Chamber of Commerce. This resolution covers exemptions for three events being done by the Lewisville Clemmons Chamber in 2024. The first date is for Lewisville Family Game Night on January 27, 2024. This is a family-friendly event planned for Lewisville residents to come together for games and food and other fun during the slower winter months. Plus, it will showcase local and small businesses in our area. In addition, the Winston-Salem-Forsyth County Schools will be participating in the event to bring together youth as part of the initiative. The second and third dates are for the 2024 Class of Leadership Lewisville Clemmons. This program develops current and future leaders in our area with different days devoted to topics such as learning about local government and increasing community engagement. The Chamber is requesting the exemption for the Local Government Day on February 1, 2024, and the Human Services Day on June 6, 2024. The leadership class is on a cycle to be held every other year, and I understand the town of Lewisville has supported this community-based program in the past. The town staff recommends approval of Resolution 2023-042.
Any questions for the manager? A motion, please?
So move.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. One more for us.
Yes, sir. Item number 6G. This is Resolution 2023-043. It's also a facility fee exemption for Winston-Salem-Forsyth County Planning and Development Services. This resolution covers a fee exemption for one event hosted by Winston-Salem-Forsyth County Planning, and it's to utilize the Shallowford, Lewisville, and Vianna Rooms at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center on October 25, 2023, so coming up just next month. And that will be for the Forward 2045 Public Input Meeting. This will allow local residents to have their voices heard on this countywide comprehensive plan, especially on issues of interest to the Lewisville community. Town staff recommends approval of Resolution 2023-043.
And Stacy, I believe this is part of their revisions and reviews of the legacy plan that they're getting ready to do?
Yes, that's correct.
Councilmembers, any questions?
I just, a comment before. I do know that Forsyth County currently, as we speak, has a survey that is going out that some of our citizens may receive, and I think if you do happen, not everybody's going to get one, but if you do get one, please respond to it, because then that will help tie into this on down the road, if you will. I just happened to saw that and everything, so.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. I think that's an important distinction to make right now. As you all know, the county does all of the zoning outside of the town limits of Lewisville. Sometimes they take a look at zoning that maybe we don't necessarily agree with because it doesn't conform to our vision of Lewisville and what the surrounding community should be. So not only if you get a form, a survey, please, please, as Mr. Franklin suggests, fill it out and return it, expressing what you believe the future vision of Lewisville is, but also, on the 25th, I urge you to please come out and attend that meeting. This is an important time when the planners of the county can hear your thoughts about what Lewisville should be, how we like it, what we would like it to be, and what you say at that meeting will be incorporated into the overall revision of the legacy plan. So it's an important meeting for you all to attend.
What was that date again, please?
October 25, and I believe it's going to be 6 o'clock?
Yes, they had tried to get it so it was either going to be 6:00 to 8:00, or 5:30 to 7:30, try and catch folks, including those who work and those who can't, but they'll be announcing that time shortly as they firm up their plans.
Alrighty. Did we need a motion, please?
A motion. Second.
Ms. Foster makes the motion. Ms. Welch makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Mr. Manager, your upcoming events, please.
Yes, sir. Now we're on to item 7A. These are administrative reports, and the first one is upcoming events. So between now and your next council meeting, there are three town events planned for Shallowford Square. On September 15, tomorrow night, we will be having another movie night, this time with Paddington 2 on the big screen. The movie is planned to start when it gets dark around 8:15 PM. Also, the Vianna Civic Club will be handling concessions for purchase, including popcorn, hot dogs, and candy. So that's Friday night, tomorrow night. Just in very short time thereafter, September 23, Saturday night, there will be a Doobie Brothers tribute band playing, and this band called Eyes of Silver has received excellent reviews. The concert is planned for 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. We also plan to have food trucks, such as What You Say, which has been very popular with so many of the residents. And finally, on October 6, a Friday night, we'll have the movie called Ghostbusters: Answer the Call. The evening will start, though, with Girl Scout Troop 40047 hosting Bingo from 5:30 to 6:30 PM, along with prizes and fun to be had there. The movie should start around dark, that's around 8:15 PM, and concessions are available for purchase from Vianna Civic Club, including their famous movie popcorn. are available for purchase from Vianna Civic Club, including their famous movie popcorn.
And Mr. Manager, who are we going to call? Very good, okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Council, we would like to give you and the community an update on the recent summer student leadership that was held August fifteenth here at Lewisville Town Hall. As you recognized earlier, we have one of the participants with us this afternoon. We did have eleven students to participate in the day-long event where they learned a little bit about Lewisville government. It was a good day, and we are appreciative of all of the students that come. We're always excited to share our love for local government with our younger generation and hope that they were able to glean a little bit about local government and their Lewisville community while they were here. We are already looking at ways that we can continue improving this well-received program, and we just look forward to hosting it again next year.
Comment, please. Wanted to thank the staff for all the work that went into that, and, and also special thank you to Councilmember Hunt and her leadership with that. So looking forward to the next one.
Thank you. The next item.
Anyone else have a comment before on student leadership?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
So one of the things I wanted to bring to the surface, we talked about a little bit in briefing about how we were going to be formalized in future student leadership. And I had the opportunity over the last seven days to go back with Dora's help and take a look at our old resolutions. There were about seven different ordinance and resolutions that we had regarding the old Student Leadership Committee that we had, and then we dissolved it in 2021. In that, and when we dissolved it on the ordinance, when we, when we decided to make that decision as a council, and it was this sitting council that did it, we simply stated that we were going to revamp that leadership program. So my ask tonight of council is that we give staff some direction on what we want to do moving forward, and do we have the support of council to proceed forward with student leadership program revamping and including both the middle school and the high school?
Would you like feedback this evening, or you want to, you want to maybe do it at our retreat in January?
I'm comfortable with a treat in January, but if there's any initial thoughts, I'd love those as well.
Very good.
All in favor?
Yeah, thank you.
That's great.
Thank you, council.
We're better together, so we'll make a gallant effort to bring this in our retreat, and we'll talk about how we can once again provide an amazing experience for our young people in Lewisville. Now you can do the next item.
Well, we just want to remind the community that there will be a candidate forum on October nineteenth. It will be held here at Town Hall. It is sponsored and conducted by the Lewisville Civic Club. All of the candidates have been invited to participate in this. It will be broadcast on Channel Six only, so it'll be in person, or it can be viewed on Channel Six, and it will be broadcast recurring on Channel Six up until the election. The next item is the CPR class that will be held at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. This is being sponsored by the Lewisville Fire Department. It'll be on November third at one PM. As of last date, we had thirty registrants for this, so we are looking forward to it, and it seems to be a very well-received program. And thank you, Councilmember Welch, for your support of this. And the final item to just remind council of is the newly elected officials orientation. A save the date has been sent to all candidates, asking them to pencil in November thirtieth from five thirty to seven at Mary Alice Warren Community Center. After the election, we will reach back out to the successful candidates on more details and more information related to that.
Very good. Any questions for Dora? Thank you, Dora.
Thank you.
All righty. Ladies and gentlemen, we have two meetings a month that we, that are public meetings. One is our briefing, which occurs the first Thursday of every month, and of course, the town council meeting, which occurs the second Thursday of every month. Sometimes we do take action at our briefing sessions, and when we do, we like to report those actions out so they become part of the public record. Mr. Manager, will you have any comments on them?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is item seven C. Under administrative reports, town council only took one action item at the meeting on September seventh, and this was to direct the town clerk to investigate the annexation petition for the next phase of Lake at La Sara. This action was necessary to comply with the applicable annexation rulemaking.
Very good. Any questions? All righty. Ladies and gentlemen, we've arrived at that time once again, where you have an opportunity to come forward, share your thoughts that you may have with the town, the town council. If you have any comments, please come forward, state your name and your address. Darian left the room, so I'm assuming that he was, he's contemplating what he might come back and say. Anyone wish to speak? If not, again, you can also send your comments to Lewisville Town, or townclerk@lewisvillenc.net, Council members, any thoughts this evening? Franklin?
I will say, as I have many times, that if you're able to give blood, please do. It helps someone else. Mayor, I always appreciate you doing the same thing, too.
Mr. Franklin, you're always so good about bringing awareness to that. I saw something on a news broadcast that the blood supplies are down by twenty-five percent nationally. I was stunned by that. So thank you for your constancy around that issue.
Thank you. Anything else, council members? Ms. Hunt?
Mayor, I just have a, just a general overall comment. Thank you, guys, for attending the night. It's great to see you in the audience. I know I had an opportunity to talk with you at the leadership meeting, so, or at the student leadership event. So thank you for coming this evening. It's great to see all the young faces in the audience, too, our next generation. Before we know it, they'll be ready.
Council members, anything else? As I sometimes do, I forgot to introduce our staff at the beginning of our meeting, and I'd like to do that now. We have our town manager, James Ayers. We have a town attorney, Elliot Fuss. We have our town planner and assistant town manager, Stacy Tolbert. We have our town public works director, John Hannah. We have our town communication specialist, Veronica Leisure. We have our town clerk, who you heard make several presentations tonight, Dora Moore, and we have our town finance director. You want to introduce yourself?
Pam O'Reilly.
Pam O'Reilly. Pam didn't get to say very much, so we like to give her a chance once in a while. Council members, anything else this evening? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion, Mr. Franklin makes the second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight. It's always good to see faces here in the chambers with us, and those of us, of those of you who have taken time to watch this at home, we thank you for taking time out of your evenings. With that, we adjourn. Thank you.